All right, everyone, I have our wonderful guest, Mr. Craig Whiting, a candidate for the Eagle Mountain City Council. Craig, thank you so much for joining us.
Hey, you're very welcome. I'm honored to be here.
Great. Well, let's get into it. Craig, first off, where are you from?
So born and raised here in Utah. Cottonwood Heights is where I lived and grew up. Then I lived in West Jordan for actually 15 years of my life, and that was right before coming here to Eagle Mountain five years ago.
Nice. What brought you to Eagle Mountain? What did you like about Eagle Mountain?
So here's the gig. I so I'm a real estate broker. I've been in the industry for a couple decades. I've sold hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of transactions, and I have seen pretty much every subdivision up and down the Wasatch Front. And I loved showing homes out in Saratoga Springs, Eagle Mountain, but more particularly Eagle Mountain, especially where I was living in West Jordan and a very dense neighborhood. And I love coming out and showing properties out here. You know, there were new homes, new neighborhoods, new commercial areas. And it felt like a lot of new opportunity. So, and that being said, I knew where I could find more acreage. So I bought in a subdivision in Eagle Mountain that has acreage and something I couldn't find elsewhere. And so I made Eagle Mountain. Eagle Mountain was not a default choice for me. It was a very intentional choice. I mean, I've seen so many neighborhoods up and down the Wasatch Front, so many cities up and down the Wasatch Front. Eagle Mountain was a choice for me that I intentionally made, and our family has not regretted it at one moment. We love it here.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah, you sound like a lot of people who, you know, you see the acreage and then you see the economic development opportunities that are here. It's just fantastic. Yeah, you're, it sounds like you're a lot, you're with a lot of us. So what drew you to run for city council?
You know, that's a great question. I did not wake up January 1st, 2023 and think, okay, I'm going to run for city council this year. And in fact, mid-May, late-May, I was not going to be running for city council, but there were a number of individuals who are involved in the politics in Eagle Mountain and who called me and said, Craig, will you please put your name in the ring? And it wasn't just one. It was, it was four different people in a period of like just a few days. And then neighbors additional to that asking me, Craig, will you please run? And, and that gets into some of my background, which at some point you may ask some questions on that. So I'll save that. That reason, but getting in, getting in for the campaign was originally, it's not, I'm not a politician. I've never had a desire to be a politician, but I do highly value the public good. I own a real estate brokerage. We'll talk more about that as we go on here. But the reason why I bring up the real estate brokerage thing is anybody that's in real estate will, will understand this concept. The sales agents within the real estate, within the real estate industry, the agents do well. And they make their money on their own sales. Brokers get a piece of what an agent does. However, you need to have so many of those agents doing so much production to make it even worth it because of the expenses to run the brokerage and the liability and things like that. The brokerage for me is not a moneymaker. The brokerage for me is a way for me to give back to the agents. For me to train, to pass on what I've learned so they can help their families. Like my, the brokerage is not the money thing for me in any way, shape or form. It is a public service. It is a public good. And my life is driven by that motive. And so city council is the same thing. There's a little bit of compensation, but not near what, I mean, I was sort of adding up what, what I would be getting paid hourly. And I would be better to get pretty much any other job. It's not a money thing. And it's really just for the public good. And, and so after I was asked several times by people to run, I thought, okay, I've got a unique skill set, which we'll talk about during this interview, that I feel will be a great, great asset and blessing to Eagle Mountain.
Okay, so let's get right into it then. What is that skill set? What, okay, first, before that, I want to ask you what specific issues those people are coming to you with saying, Craig, please run. Did they have an issue in mind? Did they just know that you're public service driven? Or what was the why behind that?
So I bring, I bring a unique educational professional background that does not exist on the current city council and possibly has never existed on any city council that the, that the city has had. I'm not trying to be pompous with that. It's just the facts. I have a master's degree in real estate development. I have a certificate in urban planning. I have a bachelor's degree in business management. My, my master's degree, I got at the University of Utah. I was the top graduate in the class, and I don't want to pump my own like self, but that's just the facts. And so I have closed hundreds of millions of dollars of real estate transactions, both commercial residential land. I represent, I've represented several developers on projects through up and down the Wasatch Front. I represent builders up and down the Wasatch Front. And so you may initially hearing this think, okay, Craig's going to come in here and try to make this a high dense area that's going to be very profitable for builders and developers and that kind of a thing. And that's exactly opposite of what, what the case is. Here's, here's the main element in the heart of why I'm running and the heart of why my voice is needed on the city council. It's this. When there is a high density development, who are the beneficiaries of that? First, the land owner makes more money. The developer makes more money, the builder makes more money, those entities, those are the benefit. They are doing it in the name of affordable housing. However, we can go into a really deep discussion, a really deep discussion on this, that high dense neighborhoods in an area that has very little employment and no public transportation, no, or I say no mass transit is all it's doing is adding significant traffic to the roads and a lot more pollution. It's a commuter city right now. And that'll change over time, but it's not who we are right now. And so the gig is this, so these developers are able to fund campaigns for city council members and get their elected people on. All the developers need are three votes out of the five. And once they have that, they can literally do pretty much anything they want to accomplish in the city. And I will tell you, what development works well in Lehigh is not necessarily the development that works well in Eagle Mountain. And so the people that have called me, they're calling me because they realize I have significant experience having negotiated thousands of contracts, having worked so many hours and so many years with developers and builders that I actually understand their language and I can be strong in representing the interests of the city and also strong in helping create stable communities that will last a long time, a really long time, that will be ones that people want to move to and, and stay at. Cause right now, and you understand this Cole being in real estate as well.
Yeah.
That people choose Eagle Mountain primarily, and this is unfortunate, but primarily they choose it because of the price. They do not choose it because of the location. They universally, when clients tell me, say, Craig, I want to move to Northern Utah County. I want to buy Northern Utah County. I say, okay, what cities want to live in? And they go down the list. The last city they put on the list is Eagle Mountain. I'll go to Eagle Mountain only if that's the last place I have to go to.
And that's where they end up buying.
They don't realize how awesome Eagle Mountain is, number one. Once they get there, they actually really like it. But, but the reason why they don't want it is because it's so far away from their job. They don't want to commute for 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour. I was, I got a haircut earlier today and they're in Eagle Mountain, a great, great clips there on Pony Express. And the lady that cut my hair, she said, my husband has to commute an hour a day to go to where. Okay, so people generally don't choose Eagle Mountain as their number one place. And it's because Eagle Mountain has been competing for residents based on price. My proposition to people is instead of competing on price, we need to compete on value. And I would, I would encourage people to go to electcraigwhiting.com and I've got a whole lot of research there that shows how Eagle Mountain can compete on values set on price. But in order to, in order to do this, in order to compete on value of necessity, we need to use our primary asset that we have that no one else has. And I can say no one else has up and down the Wasatch Front, and that is land. We have ample land, but you wouldn't think that we do based on the developments that are being proposed in Eagle Mountain. You would think that we have no land and we're running out of space. We have 32,000 acres of land, most of which is undeveloped still. And despite that, we continue to receive applications to the city of really high dense developments that benefit the developer and the land seller, but then leave a subdivision behind that doesn't really benefit the city in the long term? Or will it create a transient neighborhood, which I can tell you, the statistics show that there is a lot more transient type of things happening when you have a postage stamp lot. Because at some point you might think, you know, I'd really like to have a trailer on the side of my yard. Or now I've got teenagers and I've got to park a car somewhere and I don't want to park it necessarily on the street. And you're forced to move because you don't have something that's a long-term viable product.
Yeah. No, it's 100% true. And, and one of the things that I look at, being in real estate with buyers when we're driving down the street, judging the neighborhood by its cover, because at that point, that's all you can do when you're showing a house. I tell them, to be honest, the first thing I look at is how many cars are on the street? Because that's a good indicator of how, how dense it is and, and where that neighborhood is going. And so to spread things out, it really does make a difference. And so again, can you say your website one more time for the viewers?
Yeah. So the website is electcraigwhiting.com. And you will see some insignificant research and you're okay if I dive into just a little bit of it right now?
Hundred percent.
Okay, this, this, this hits at the heart of the matter. So I lived in West Jordan for 15 years. And I was able to see West Jordan and how it operated versus South Jordan and how it operated. And frankly, look, I love where I lived in West Jordan, even though I was on a postage stamp lot because happiness really comes more from within in your own mindset about life than it is your external environment and certain factors. But it gave me an opportunity to really compare those two cities, and especially because I've sold real estate, so much real estate in both those cities that I started observing a few things. If you look at West Jordan's school system and its school ratings, it ranks much, it's much more inferior to South, to South Jordan. So South Jordan ranks so much better school system. Crime rate, so much lower in South Jordan, so much higher in West Jordan. You look at property values, you take the highest valuing zip code in West Jordan, the highest valuing zip code in South Jordan, they're like a hundred and, I don't remember, $13,000 difference, something like a 120,000, whatever, 140,000. There's a huge difference in the value between those. It's like, okay, so why does South Jordan have so much better schools, so much lower crime rate? So, and higher property values? What the heck does South Jordan do? They're geographically equal in their, their competitive location. They are like identically competitive, competitive in that. You look at when they both incorporated in the mid 1800s. They both had the same amount of time to build what they wanted to build. South Jordan intentionally created a lot of many subdivisions with quarter acre lots, third acre lots, whereas West Jordan has so many 0.1 acre lots, tiny lots. That's the biggest difference. And yet our city is trying to model itself after a model that we already has, we have already proven will have a worse school system and a higher crime rate as time goes on. You don't feel it initially. You won't even feel it in the first five years. Probably won't even feel it in the first 10 years, maybe 15 years. This city is already super young anyway. We're only like going into now our third decade, right? And so you're not going to feel the effects. I could put a gazillion townhomes somewhere and you're not going to feel all of those effects immediately. Okay, but you will with time, for sure. And so, okay, I'm guilty as charged. If you want me to create the strongest school system possible and the lowest crime rate possible, I'm guilty as charged because that's what I'm going after. Right now, our infrastructure is taxed too much, and you will see that in the schools already. They're already, they're already getting overcrowded. We already have way more traffic on the roads than there were even just two or three or four years ago. And we don't even have the funding set aside or secured for expanding SR73. That's not, that's conceptually all there, but the funding's not there. So this is years away for that happening. We already, we have a trap, we have a traffic issue getting out of city center. We need to get, have a road that goes, the Mid Valley Road that goes east of Frontier Middle School and up over the, over the hills there into Saratoga and feeding into Mountain View Corridor. That's got to be put in like ASAP. We're behind on our infrastructure. And despite the fact we're behind on our infrastructure, we still continue to rubber stamp these, these, these development approvals that come in and increase density. We keep granting zone changes when we don't need to grant zone changes. And we're sticking more and more and more people in here and we're getting rid of the character of Eagle Mountain that is its rural beautiful character. And I realize we can't keep rural forever, but we can keep rural elements for a long time. But one of the critical ways to do that is we need to have a strong enough voice on the city council that can coordinate with developers in a, in a professional way and say, look, developers, we're closed for business when it comes to doing zone changes to giving you density. We're open for business for creating sustainable subdivisions that are, that have bigger lot sizes. And when I say bigger, I'm not talking about five acres, even though I love five acre lots. I'm talking about creating more quarter acre lots and third acre lots. Those are big enough to accommodate third car garages. They're comfortable to parking trailers on the side of the property, getting, being able to drive along the side of your property to get to the back of your property, building a, you know, a shop in the back of your property if you want. So having a greenhouse if you want, building a sports court if you want, having a big nice garden. These lifestyle elements that we, that many of us grew up with, it's becoming extinct because of city councils not approving, or sorry, not yet, city councils up and down the Wasatch Front that continue to approve high dense subdivisions. It's so hard to find lot sizes that are decent size. And in fact, like most, most, you know, animal rights, like real animal rights begin at like a half acre. You start to get some amount of animal rights. Guess what? That is becoming an extinct lifestyle right now. Like you look at the research on my website, you will see, you will see, it's becoming a millionaire's game if you want to have animal rights. And it's, it should not be that way. We need to be able to produce, it's a supply demand issue. The, the larger lots are so few and far between, the only, the wealthier will buy those. But if we make, if we make it more commonly available, like just hundreds of eight, if we have hundreds of lots coming onto the market that are quarter acre size, guess what's going to happen? Those, price of those lots will come down. It's a supply demand issue. And so it's, it's an unfortunate thing that I, I am trying to create a voice on the city council where, where we have a strong enough wall, a strong enough defense against these high density subdivisions that are being requested that we can actually create a city that actually has some lot sizes that are decent size. It's one of my huge pushes and it's, it's where I've got strong expertise. And so going back to one of your questions like, whoa, Craig, why are you getting the race? And why did, why did these people ask you to get in the race? Because none of them have master's degree in real estate development. None of them have planning certificates. None of them. Well, there are some that have real estate experience for sure. There are a couple of them that do have real estate licenses or have had real estate licenses and have got that knowledge, but not to the level of what I'm bringing to the table of having closed hundreds of millions of dollars of transactions in the Wasatch Front, having you know, represented developers and builders in other cities and understanding their mindset, understanding the contracts, understanding their mentality and having the professionalism to work with them in a way that they will, you know, it's not like we're a developer, we just hit them in the head. That's not how it is. Like, look, we can be very professional, cordial and, and keep the discussion at the ideas level and not tack character and that kind of a thing. And so, you know, there are, just as a quick side note, there are some subdivisions we're lacking that we need, such as a 55 plus community. I believe Eagle Mountain may have one, but we're severely lacking in that product type right now. I'm okay with that density. So if people's like, Greg, you're talking about low density. Now you just approved this dense subdivision is 55 plus. Well, look, look at the characteristics of the 55 plus, and it fits exactly with what I'm talking about. Those are people with no crime rate within that community. They have, they have income, they spend, they spend money within this and then they bring a lot of wisdom to the community and they don't congest our roads because they typically aren't commuting. We can have dense 55 plus subdivisions without burdening our system and the fact that blesses our system. I'm also in favor of density where it comes to the wildlife corridor. Because the wildlife corridor is a great amenity that we can create in our city. But it requires landowners to give up land and not make money on it. I'm okay giving those landowners density bonuses to make up for the money they would have otherwise had because I really respect property rights. And if, if a landowner already has a zoning that's high density, guess what? I'm not going to take that away because you, you as a landowner already have that. Okay. So you, you have a right to that and we're not going to come in there and be, you know, it's just wrong for the government to come in and hurt people's property values that way. So if someone has that and the subdivision request comes through that meets the zoning code and if that zoning code allows for a little bit of, you know, higher density product, that's going to go through. You know, that we're going to make, make that work. So there are going to be some situations like that. But overall, you know, over the years, Eagle Mountain has been so squishy in its city council that it has approved on the books right now, 30, approximately 30,000 lots already approved that have no sunset to the approval. Now this occurred many years ago. The current city council is not guilty of that. Okay. And even probably prior, I don't know how far back it goes, but the current city council is not guilty of that. But when you have 30,000 small lots, predominantly small lots approved, and keeping in mind Eagle Mountain has around 15,000 currently built. So you're tripling the size of your city of what's already approved. And they're already small. I'm giving you 30,000 reasons why we show, we don't need small lots, guys. We already have 30,000 approved and we don't know when they're going to get built. The builders need to start building those. But when people say, Craig, you're trying to create a community only for the wealthy, I'm like, no, we've got 30,000 lots coming through. They're small. How many more of those lots do you want before we start thinking that we should have some larger lots available too? So we can preserve a lifestyle for people that want animal rights and want greenhouses and want big gardens. I want to build a sport court or a hobby shop or park trailers or a boat or something like that. Okay, that's why, you know, if Eagle Mountain continues on its trajectory, it is going to be a problematic city. And we have to have a strong enough voice to put it on a better trajectory. So I'm passionate about this particular topic. But that's, you know, you would think as a real estate broker, man, I'm going to make way more money if Eagle Mountain is dense as, as can be because you want to know why? Not only are they going to increase the number of sales we're going to have because it's so dense. They're going to be moving so frequently, I'm going to sell them. And two years later, I'm going to make money again. And I'm two years later, I'm going to make money again. And I'm going to make money over and over and over. As transient a community as possible, and I will enrich myself on that transit community. You would think that's what I would be aiming for, but it's the exact opposite. Because I want to make a community that people choose to, to, I want to choose, I want people to come and say, Craig, no, 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 I don't want to live in Saratoga. No, I don't want to live in, no, I don't, there's no way I want to live in Lehigh. I want to live in Eagle Mountain. That's my first choice, Craig. Find me a home in Eagle Mountain. That's what I want. That's the kind of city I want to create here.
Yeah. Oh, that's fantastic. And, and there are a lot of people who, because it's such, it's such an interesting city with the dynamics because there are a lot of young families moving here for that reason of you can get a decent amount of space for a good price. And, but those people, especially these past couple of years, I mean, people are just getting priced out, right? You've seen it where most people probably can't even afford to live in their own home right now if they were to buy again. And to be able to see, like I have young kids, my daughter just went to her first day of preschool today. So for the 15 years down the road thing, that's pretty, that, that's something, that's a vision that a lot of people should be able to get on board with because having that development and having that space and the safety and, and to be honest, it gives the city status, like you said, where people say, oh no, I want to live in Eagle Mountain. And that's what people living here should care about, in my opinion. So I, I am 100% on board with you with that and, and that your passion is well founded, in my opinion. So, and you've touched on all of my questions. You, you've touched on what unique insight you can bring to the city council. Your background definitely shows that you're qualified to be able to talk to these developers from an economic development side. You can foresee issues that may come up before you even approve certain proposals. That, that experience is invaluable. So Craig, anything else you'd like to add to our viewers before we close out the interview?
Yeah, just a few quick thoughts. There are three spots that are open. You have three votes. What you need to question is this, would my vote, or sorry, would my, my voice on the council be unique enough and strong enough that it needs to be one of the five? Like you're, you're choosing your basketball team right now. If you choose five point guards that all have overlapping skill sets, how successful will your team be? I am confident that I will serve a unique role on the council that needs to, where I would be, you're like, dude, I need to have that guy on the basketball court because he provides something for this team that the team doesn't have. There will be other candidates that, that you're going to also need to look at and say, okay, balance out what you're voting for. I know I'm a unique voice, but look at the others. Make sure you make some wise choices. And let's get a great team put together that has with complementary skill sets that can move the city forward in the, in the best way possible. And again, you can find my, my, you know, my other policy positions on electcraigwhiting.com. And maybe if I can add just a couple more minutes to address real quickly on affordable housing, Cole, if that's all right. I've got a lot of insights on, on electcraigwhiting.com about affordable housing because I know there are people saying, Craig, I want to make sure that we don't over, we created too amazing of a city. Is it going to get, you know, are we going to get priced out on real estate? It's, it's not going to happen. Like the home I live in, the price I paid for it is six times higher than the price my dad paid for his home 40 years ago. And the fact of the matter is, Cole, you say your, your oldest child went to preschool today. So by the time, you know, let's go 20 years from now, when, when, when your daughter buys a home, it's probably going to be twice, perhaps twice the price you paid. I don't know the exact number, right? But it's going to be quite a bit more. And people say, well, then it's not affordable. Well, things you got to keep in mind, what's my income today versus what my dad's income was back in 1980? So it's, it's a lot higher. So wages are, wages are going up. Okay. And, and the market cannot outprice the average consumer. It never will. It won't sustain itself. So wages will go up commensurate with what prices are doing and they don't go up equally. Sometimes some years wages outpace price and sometimes prices on homes outpace wages in terms of like an effect on a monthly basis. But, but the point of matter is it's not going to. And I would tell parents that are concerned about affordable housing, look at my website. I've got a lot of ideas about that that where there's some, there's some, anyway, there are a lot of ideas that address the affordable housing issue. And then the other thing I would just tell people is this, live your life in a way that you do not need to depend on government choices to make you happy or to provide you what you need. Live in a way that you use your agency to create enough of your own resources that you can live independent of the government. That is such a critical thing. I have taught my own kids very similar concept. I'm trying to prepare my kids in a way that they can be effective in society, earn what they can earn and they can live in society meaningfully. And not only that, there, there are, there are many people that, for instance, will go to college and choose a degree that cannot provide a healthy enough income. Once you get out of that degree, that is a choice that you made. You need to really make different choices and choose pathways that will provide you enough resources to survive. I say, don't rely on the city, the city for it. Don't rely on the government for your own wellbeing and your own welfare. Do what you can on your own and to, to really position yourself to stand independent of the government. Now that being said, I do have on my website ideas that the government can employ to help with some of the affordable housing issues. And, and to help continue to provide a product type that, that those who are first time buyers that they can get into and that they can start building wealth. You know, real estate, 90% of millionaires make it there through real estate. Real estate ownership is very, very critical. A very, very critical thing that we need to help people do. And our city unfortunately recently lost $2 million to the county because the city had not created an affordable housing plan. And because they hadn't created the plan in time, we lost $2 million that got sucked up to the county level. Think of what that could have done for first time buyers if that, if that affordable housing plan involves some kind of grant to first time buyers in Eagle Mountain. That's another thing I'll be working on as a city council member, by the way. And that actually, not actually not on my website. I need to add that part in there. But, but that's something I'm going to be, would be doing so that that money can be given to first time home buyers. Imagine we could have given out at $2 million, how many grants could we have given out at $5,000 a grant? I don't like calculating front, but I think that's probably 400, some huge number. So massive, massive number. Yeah. Yeah, that we could have given out in grants, that money that we don't, the city didn't need to get paid back because we get that $2 million pretty much annually, by the way. And then we just got to create a plan and we'll start capturing that locally instead of having it sucked up to the county. There are some cool things we can do to assist on, on that side of thing for affordable housing. But anyway, I only bring that up because I have had some feedback from some people who have heard me talk already. And they love a lot of my vision and they say, well, Craig, you know, I love this vision, but you know, it's going to outprice my kids. It won't. It's not going to outprice your kids. There are 30,000 reasons why it's not going to outprice your kids because we already have those. But they're also, it's new. Okay. All right. So I'll wrap it up with that. But take, take into account the unique, the unique skill set I bring, also a managerial aspect of that too. I've been self-employed almost my entire life. I've just been running my own show. And I run a brokerage with 86 agents. I got staff and I've got leadership that happens. You can't create an entity like that without being really strong on fiscal management, HR related issues with the brokerage and that kind of a thing. We'll take what I've done to grow this brokerage, which by the way, is in the top 2% of producing brokerages. what I've done to grow this brokerage, which by the way, is in the top two percent of producing brokerages in in the state of Utah, I think on the residential side of things. We also do commercial, but I think on the residential side, we're in the top two percent in production, which is great. Um, more than, anyway, we're producing more than a lot of brokerages that are like double and triple our size. Um, but you can't do that without leadership at the top. And I've been that leader and I'd be happy to be that leader for Eagle Mountain.
Wonderful. Well, again, everybody, this is Craig Whiting. And Craig, thank you so much for the interview and all the best.
Okay, thanks, Cole. Have a great day.
You too. Bye.